Okay, so seeing the appointed time has arrived, the vice chair opens up the October 18th, 2023 meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. Being held here, we're quiet meeting room Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Broadcast live on local channel eight. Stream live on the town of Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov backslash, well slash, channel dash eight. Okay, so I'd like to welcome everybody here and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Michael, would you like to lead us?
I'll lead it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is a review of meeting minutes from September 2023. I read them, I thought they were pretty good. Does anybody have any comments or edits?
I move to approve them as they're written.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 We have a public hearing at 7:10, but let's start with the A and R. New Seaberry Homes LLC, 17 Azalea Lane, map and parcel, well, map 116, parcel 74, and map 110, parcel eight. The purpose of the A and R is to divide lot 1888 on LCC 1408-215 into three lots and create a use easement on lot 52 and lot 36 on LLC plan 14201-C. So, so, okay. Hi, Kieran.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Kieran Healy. I'm a land surveyor with the BSC Group, representing the owners of the property, New Seaberry. We're looking to divide this lot into three parcels, as you mentioned. And other than that, it's a pretty straightforward A and R plan. We have frontage on Azalea Way, and the middle lot is not a buildable lot, but it's an access lot. As the lot is land court, the area has to become a lot under the land court regulations as opposed to just being called a way of an access easement. So, as a result, that's why there's three lots here, is to comply with land court regulations.
Okay. So, you threw me for a loop. So, I just wanted to disclose that I know Kieran Healy from my work for the town of Mashpee, but I don't think there's any conflict of interest. So, I just, but I just do want to, okay. So, this is a subdivision, right? How can we do an A and R on subdivided land?
You frequently would perform an A and R on subdivided land if it meets the criteria under section 81L of the subdivision control law. You'll note on the plan that there are reduced frontages along Azalea Lane, but each lot that is created here is within the New Seaberry Special Permit Area, so there's no minimum frontage or lot area. With the adequate access on Azalea Lane and within the New Seaberry Special Permit Area, I don't see any issue with endorsement. I think it conforms with the requirements of the subdivision control law for A and R endorsement.
But don't we have to change the subdivision plan?
I don't believe that you would. I think that this plan itself would effectuate the change in the registered land court plan.
So, this is not incorporated into the permit we have out now?
So, this is a re-division of land on, what is this, phase three of the cottages, Kieran? Or phase four?
Phase four, I believe. But this, yeah, basically the lot itself, the subdivision was created, and this was created as one lot. So, we can subdivide this one lot into three and comply with the regulations. It does, in fact, create a subdivision by doing so.
No, I'm just saying, we have a subdivision plan that we're changing with an A and R. I think you have to, I think.
No. No, the lot itself, because we're dividing this one lot, and this lot would get, this plan, when it leaves here, will go to the land court, and the land court will ultimately change the decree plan, and they will issue another decree plan sometime over the next five years to establish these three lots.
Is the other engineer nodding? Are you saying, "Go for it"?
I'm, yes, I'm Tom Bunker. Yes, we do work out here also along with BSC, but I think the difference is the road is not being changed.
Oh.
That's what makes it an A and R.
Okay. That sounds reasonable.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
With that, I would recommend endorsement as an A and R.
So, what?
So, it's this lot here, this access lot? How come I can't see the numbers?
So, it's lot 12, 11, and the one with the pool on it?
Is it in the, is it the, is it the number in the diamonds?
The number of the diamond is the street address.
Oh, one, two.
Okay.
So, the one in the middle won't have a number associated with it.
So, if you look at the notes, they're dividing lot 1888 into 1888A, B, and where is C?
Oh, here it is.
Where is C? Right here, C.
A, B, and C.
Mm-hmm.
So, that would have been one singular lot that they're dividing into three portions.
And the reason it's like that is land court will establish their own lot numbers.
Okay.
No, so actually, there's, these are an insertion of new lot lines.
So, that's where they're meeting there?
So, it's just these three lots that are, it's not the lot one back?
So, they actually don't need the 150 feet?
Correct, it is not.
Because it's in the New Seaberry Special Permit Area, so there's no minimum lot area or frontage. So, they provided the adequate access of 20 feet in width for the access easement. And you're showing only 35 feet of frontage here, 20 feet here. But that's okay because it's in the New Seaberry Special Permit Area. Otherwise, it wouldn't be acceptable.
All right, why am I, why did I ask that, Mary?
Yeah.
Then why are they going for an A and R? You know, why are they going for that? If they, if they run the New Seaberry, they don't have to be down to 50 feet.
They still need to effectuate the division of land subject to the subdivision control law. So, to insert the lot lines more or less on paper and register the new lots with land court, they need to have you endorse the A and R. There's no other process for which they could do it.
No. All right.
Okay, well, it's going to land court, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to make that motion, Mike?
I will. I'm more than, we support the effort.
Endorse.
Endorse.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I learned something new today.
Can I assign this, or you can hand it off to Mr. Healy?
Do you want any paper ones signed? It's up to you, Kieran. Do you want any paper ones?
No, I'll take this with me, and we'll scan tomorrow, so.
Today's the 18th, if I'm not mistaken.
Just, Mary, does it sign it, or do we all?
You only require one signature, because you guys have always signed it. Need a rubber band?
Let me fold this up.
I would love that, thank you.
Evan, you want it?
I thought the public hearing notice was in here, no?
Someone just pulling this off, sorry.
I think I need the public hearing notice.
Would you mind reading it from my phone?
So, where are you going to? The town?
I'm just going to my emails.
Oh, okay. Do you think it would be on the planning board or planning site, planning department?
You're looking for that?
Well, actually, the Cranberry Point Public Hearing Notice.
Okay, I got the first public hearing notice. Thank you, Michael.
I have the second.
Okay. Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11. The Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, at 7:10 at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC property owner to modify the Willow Bend Country Club Special Permit. The applicant proposes to construct 14 single-family cottages, cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Course at 275 Quinacquissette Avenue, map 69, block 32. The existing single-family dwelling is proposed for demolition. With these changes, the total unit count for the Mash, uh, excuse me. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willow Bend project will be increased to 287 if the board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinacquissette into the Willow Bend Special Permit as allowed. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected to and served by the existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant which serves the entire Willow Bend project. Submitted by Mary E. Wagan, Mashpee Planning Board. Publication dates Friday, February 10th, 2023, and Friday, February 17th, 2023. So, we received correspondence asking for continuance due to a very urgent matter in one of the team members' families. So, so.
November 1st, was it?
I, I, I don't think November 1st is going to work.
And they gave two days on November 1st.
November 1st and November 15th. This one, they wanted November 15th. But that's not going to work because Rob is not here. So, I'd accept a motion to continue this to December 6th. Everybody check that the calendar is right. Wednesday, December 6th, at 7:10.
So move.
Second.
And so, the people that are seated on that is Rob, Dennis, Karen, Michael, and me. So, okay, so, there was a first and a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That's the other one, if you don't have it.
I don't have it. So, did I give you back the first one?
Yes, you did.
All right, so that I have to open up at 7:20. Okay, so, A and R number two. Oh, the applicant is Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership Mashpee Commons II LLC. The location is Mashpee Commons, map 74, parcels 20 and 20B. The purpose of the A and R is to evenly trade several small parcels of land. I think I have this.
Where's Mashpee Commons? Where'd you just read that?
Here, under A and R.
Oh, right there.
Yeah, and so you recognize this. And there's two pages, so I'll recognize the party proponent.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Tom Bunker. I'm a professional land surveyor with BSS Design. As Evan had said, there are two plans, and, you know, get to the reason why, but Mashpee Commons is mostly, actually, where Mashpee Commons itself is, is land court, registered land. The southwest corner of the entire property is not land court land. And so, I have one original Mylar that goes to land court and one that does the other. The land court one is the plan that shows the entire site. So, I can, so everything we're doing is shown on the land court plan. I can, you know, explain that one. It's a little confusing, and I don't think you have, I highlighted in green the area that's being affected by this plan. And so, if you see, well, I could, I put it on the Mylar here.
All right. So, here's this one, it should be in part two. Yep, that one, that one, yep.
This one.
Oh, okay.
Land court requires a green highlight.
Okay. There was one in our packet electronically.
Yeah, it was electronic, and I scanned it, it was a green.
All right, so what's going on?
At the downhill side behind the theater, there's two sheds, and, I'll back up one step. And they have a special permit for their all, their, they, Mashpee here, lot 21 and, 20 and 21 have a comprehensive permit.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Right.
There are some sheds here that Mashpee Commons uses for maintenance, storage.
Yep.
And stuff here. And they want to get that land, 4,205 square feet, out of comprehensive permit land and put it into the special permit land. And so, to make up for that, there are two parcels. One is 1,555 square feet, which is here, which is part of the special permit land. It's going to go to the comprehensive permit land plus another strip up here. Now, there are two plans because this is land court land, and this is not land court.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
And so, you know, we have to, we have to create three parcels. So, this land comes out of here, and this land comes out of here. So, actually, this plan affects the entire lot, former lot 17, which is becoming lot 26. And there's 24, 25, 26, and 27. So, that's what we have to do on the land court. So, of course, this affects this one, which was lot 20, that's becoming 25. And that's the land court lot number, it's just, oh, it's a new lot number. And then this area is shown on the other plan, the detail over here. And so, this detail is really just showing this, which was lot 16B. No, 16.
16F?
16B is being divided, all the numbers aren't shown on this one, but 16B is being divided into lots 16E, F, and G. And that shows on, now, the difference is that Charlie Rowley wrote a letter, and he didn't make it show 16H yet. Because technically, that's, 16H is not being created until these, these small lots, E and F, are conveyed from Mashpee Commons, Mashpee Commons II LLC to Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership. So, you know, until land is in common ownership, it can't be combined. So, Charlie just said, I should take H off, and I do have that on.
Oh, you have one that we can sign that does not have 16H?
And I have that here, and what, hard to see the Mylar, it's out of the frame. So, this, I took the 16H off of this plan here. So, that's the description of, you know, the whole thing. Talk about two plans at once.
What is this, this double line, and is it an easement or something, or?
No, it's just, it's.
I see it starts up here.
Well, this, this 16B, looks like an easement or something, so. Well, it's not, it was just, we didn't come up with this line. I think Paulson Whitton did, they're doing the engineer planning and that. And so, it's because this 2,173 square feet plus this area here, which is, so, here equals what's being.
Okay.
It could have been any, it could have been any length, any width, so long as it had the right number of square feet.
All right, so that, lot 16 goes to this line, right?
Lot 16 is that strip.
Oh, it's just that strip?
The entire strip.
Oh, I got it, okay.
And that will be sold or transferred to.
I didn't know what that was. Did you understand that, lot 16?
Yeah.
It's just that little strip.
Well, when he says it and points it out, I do, but I couldn't explain it again.
Yeah. I got it now, all right.
I mean, we understand. It all shows on this, is that this plan, this area, 1,355 square feet, plus this 2,173 square feet equals 4,205 square feet.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, it's just land being swapped back and forth. And so, this is the, the buyer's plan, I have a revision date on there to about lot 16H.
So, that land, though, is still not land court land, then?
That corner is not land court.
Right.
And they have, I guess, no plans to make it land court. Frankly, they should.
I think that.
There's a, there's a process to take land out of registration. That would make it easier if all of this were not registered.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
But it's not, so therefore, but it's not, so we have to go through all of this.
So, is this petition plan number unique?
Yes. This is the land court case number, like the New Seaberry one, it was 11140, 11408.
408.
408. And this is 34844, is this case.
Right there.
And I is the, whatever, the ninth plan, whatever. That's what that number means.
So, I'd accept a motion to endorse petition plan 34844I?
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so how will we?
This one, sign it, or do we all have to sign it?
Well, let's take the vote on the second plan, right? I'm just trying to figure out how we can reference this one. Should I reference it?
No, not name, there's different.
So, I'd accept a motion to endorse the plan of land at Joe's Fishing Road, dated September 11th, 2023. Is this revised? Revised October 16th, 2023. Does that sound good enough?
Yep.
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
I think you see why I sought an opinion on this one from the former engineer.
Yeah.
A grand child, that was crazy.
I almost asked him to give me the last one.
So, just maybe I have to sign this, right?
One signature will work.
Okay.
Yeah, you want to come up, and you have to see the plan. So, Mashpee Commons is part registered land, part land court. So, the registry is split into two. One is just the registry, and the other one is land court, which is a much more complicated process. And, and so, part of this property is, is in land court and part is in registered land. So, you have to have two plans, because they go to two different places. But there's, there's a shed behind, you know where the movie theater is, right? The parking lot behind, there's a shed. They just want that land to be out of the Chapter 40B permit and back into the regular special permit. That's all.
There's a lot of.
But it's a lot of man, yeah.
Put it under the shed.
Sorry.
Oh, did I? I think it's under there somewhere.
Which?
So, just one person? Land court has to have everybody. I think land court has to have a history.
I don't know.
Both the Barns, so, I mean, does this go to the Barnsfield County Land Court Registry? Or does it go to Boston?
Of course, it has to go up to Boston for them to approve it, then it'll.
I think you should all sign it. One person's authorized to sign for both Barnsfield County Land Court or Registry of Deeds, but.
1018, yes.
And just for the board's knowledge, too, the swaps between permit areas will probably require a minor modification by the Board of Appeals of those existing permits to effectuate the recognition of the, of the swaps between those permits. And so, I would expect to see an application to the Board of Appeals to effectuate that sometime after recording these endorsed ANRs.
Mary, you have to sign this one?
You don't have to, right?
No.
One signature is enough.
All of them, all right, yeah?
If you're there, sign away.
Sign in the second line.
You want us all to sign one? Okay.
Well, there's only three lines on this one.
I was just looking at that, I'm not sure why there's a few more lines on this one.
Yeah, it's mostly five, five lines.
Well, it definitely has to be a quorum, so it's fine with just three. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be three. And then I sign on the top line.
I'm sure somebody could sign below the date, too, if they wanted to.
Oh, okay.
I'm willing, so if you want to, you may. You want me to just, there's no line here, is there, Bob?
Do they care if there's not a line?
You could, I think.
Hi, it's Mary, but I'm in a meeting. Okay. Not family.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more, roll up.
I can hold a paper copy. I have them in digital copy. I'll, I can recycle them for you if you're not going to keep them. I tend to keep one paper one in our paper records.
Okay, seeing that the appointed time, thank you very much. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:20 public hearing for Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. The location is Willow Bend Permit Area. The request is, applicant proposes to modify the Willow Bend Special Permit by amending the conditions limiting the number of bedrooms allowed to, in the project. Currently, Willow Bend is allowed 853 bedrooms. Willow Bend proposes to remove this condition or increase the maximum allowance. And I'm going to write, read into the record the public hearing notice pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, and the Town and Mashpee zoning bylaw, Section 174-24, Section C, Subsection 9. The Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 7:20 at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC property owner to modify the Willow Bend Country Club Special Permit. This application requests that the existing condition in the November 1991 Special Permit Modification Decision affirming the limit of the total number of bedrooms within the Willow Bend project area to 853 be amended is submitted by Mary E. Wagan, Mashpee Planning Board. Publication dates Friday, June 2nd, 2023, and Friday, June 9th, 2023. So, again, we've got a request to continue this matter. I'd accept a motion to the same date, June 6th, at, no, December 6th.
December 6th.
December 6th.
I wish it was still June.
7:20.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Then we can go to new business. Discussion and possible vote to accept the request to withdraw without prejudice the special permit application submitted by Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless to install a new personal wireless facility at 524 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., assessors map 67, parcel 4. So, the chair recognizes the party proponent.
Good evening, I'm Carl Garing on behalf of Verizon Wireless.
I moved the mics all over the place. Just bring the mics on the table back close to you so people at home can hear you.
So, thank you. It's unfortunate that I'm here this evening. I was really looking forward to going forward with this project. I don't profess to understand the high-level, just, I'm not privy to the high-level discussions that Verizon has and what, why they decide to do what they do. But I know that this project is one they want to move forward on, just they want to take a pause. And the unfortunate situation is if it was just the applicant and the town, we could agree to toll the shot clock, we could agree to mutual extensions. There's nothing in 40A nor in the Telecommunications Act that would prevent us from extending this thing. Unfortunately, with the Cape Cod Commission involved, that's, there's no mechanism available to do that, where once the application's been referred, they have so many days to open a hearing and so many days to act. And I tried to discuss that with them, if we could just have a little pause, a little timeout, because it's not like they're abandoning the project, they just are discussing some things. 'cause it's not like they're abandoning the project, they just are discussing some things behind the scenes and they want some time. And the folks that make these decisions aren't always aware of the implications down in the trenches, people like myself. We have active applications, we have things going on, we can't just all of a sudden put the brakes on, you know? But that's what they've asked me to do. So I apologize, and I'm here respectfully to ask that we be allowed to withdraw without prejudice. We intend to come back. I had talked to Evan about this earlier. We've provided the five thousand dollar PE review escrow, which we're willing to have the town continue to hold that for the time being, because the, as I said, the project is not being abandoned at this point. And, um, I also had submitted to you back in June, hard copies, you know, bound hard copies of the entire application. You folks had still requested the paper copies. The Cape Cod Commission wants everything electronic, everything. So what I'm gonna suggest is please don't throw those out, you know? We're coming back, this isn't a dead project, it's just, we're just taking, asking respectfully, a little timeout. So hopefully, all that material that we previously submitted will become relevant again in the near future. But at this time, um, because of the aforementioned Cape Cod restrictions and so forth, and Evan, you had mentioned that you were gonna have a discussion with Jordan about that. I had the same, and my understanding is that Cape Cod regs change. They used to be able to allow these extensions, and I guess they got abused where there are all these projects sort of on the back burner and languishing there and the, you know, where they didn't know, are they coming back, are they not, and everything? So they actually changed their regulations to prohibit that, so now you have to, you have to sort of expedite it. Uh, and unfortunately, we're caught with that. There's nothing, their hands are tied, they can't, they have no mechanism to agree to mutual extension. So with that, we respectfully ask you to allow us to withdraw.
Okay. So we'll, the town will keep the money, and then the next time you come back, there'll be no fee?
Yeah.
Right? Do you want that in the motion? So we'll put the, we'll put the item about the fee in the motion?
Sure.
So I'd accept a motion to allow the proj- the project proponent to withdraw without prejudice and for the town to retain the application fee for?
Engine, uh, peer review.
For peer review. Should we put a time limit on it?
That's kinda high, 'cause you doesn't know when.
What I had indicated to, um, uh, Mr. Gearing is that the board would, or excuse me, the town would hold the funds at, with the treasure until such time as it's indicated by the applicant.
Okay.
In an intent to, uh, to not reapply, and thus we would come back to the board and release.
Until the time that the applicant requests the, requests the funds back and that the withdrawal is without prejudice.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
All right, bye-bye. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
No, I hope. Okay. Discussion relative to Planning Department application to the Community Preservation Committee for an open space acquisition and possible vote to submit a letter of support. Okay. It's in here, and you cite the, um, the addresses. Why don't you explain the letter?
Um, let me just refer to it. I wrote the draft a few days ago. Um, but for a little bit of background, um-
Do you mind if I look it up online, where the addresses are?
Not at all. Um, I have been in communication with a group of property owners who own seventeen point two acres between Route one thirty and Mashpee Wakeby. Uh, it's been informally on the marketplace for a number of, of years now. There are multiple owners, they're, they're all cousins generally. Um, and they are highly motivated to sell eight of the seventeen acres, but are interested in learning the potential, uh, for an acquisition of the entire seventeen point two. So I am intending on sitting, submitting an application for that acquisition in cour- in conjunction with the Conservation Department to effectuate that sale if the town is interested in, in funding it. Um, they are generally located along Pickrell Cove Road and Pickrell Cove Circle, which includes a freshwater, isolated wetlands just west of the shoreline of Mashpee Wakeby and would provide the potential for not only preservation of wildlife habitat and water quality improvements, but also the potential for public access to water. Probably not a beach, of course, but certainly scenic vistas along the water's edge. Um, what else do I wanna make sure you're aware of?
But no, no building?
No building, no. Uh, the, the applicants are very interested in making sure that the town is the buyer of this property if the CPC and the property owners can negotiate, um, a mutually advantageous sale. They would like to protect this area. Often, I think this is referred to as Eleanor's Cove.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
And so, um, the property owners have been wonderful to work with. Um, my s- application to the CPC will include correspondence from them indicating our relationship to date. I think that this parcel of land, given its, its acreage, its sensitivity, it's located within the acquisition boundary of the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge. It has waterfront, it is waterfront access along Mashpee Wakeby. It does not make sense, in my opinion, for, uh, any sort of development, high density development certainly. And I think would be a wonderful open space acquisition by the town and would be consistent with the priorities defined in the local comprehensive plan in nineteen ninety-eight and the updated plan, if adopted by the town. So I think it's an exciting opportunity. Seventeen acres don't come up very often for sale. Um, and it's wonderful to have property owners interested in protecting it for as open space with a sale to the town. So I would humbly request the Planning Board's submission of a letter of support to support the application by my department to the CPC.
Humbly? Did he say humbly?
Humbly?
I am humble, I'm a humble man.
Is there anything on this land that creates a problem for runoff or anything with Mashpee Wakeby?
No, it's completely raw and vacant at this time.
So this, oh, go ahead.
Who, who's doing the negotiations?
This would be the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay, the committee itself.
Um, yes.
Yeah, we typically designate a couple of people to do that. One of them is in the room.
Uh, the-
We usually have Richard and, and, uh, well, the last time, we had Richard and Alan, Richard Klein and Alan Barbie do it. So we usually ask a small gr- uh, you know, a smaller group to kind of start the negotiations.
So the, the applic- the property owners did provide me, um, with an appraisal they received on the property. Uh, we, the CPC would generally seek their own third-party appraisal. Uh, but the land is valued based on the, the real estate valuation report provided to my office at almost two and a half million dollars. Uh, and again, just wanna be very, very clear that the, there is, uh, eight of the seventeen acres are, the properties are highly motivated to sell. They are less motivated to sell the rest of the acreage, but they are interested in facilitating and participating in a negotiation with hopes of protecting all of it, so.
Okay, so I'm not gonna vote, but, uh, 'cause I'm on the CPC, but I'd entertain a motion to approve, um, this letter of recommendation to be signed by Karen Faulk.
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain. Just a little.
Thank you. Yep, that's not it.
This will be known as the Evan Lair Recreation Area.
It might be known as the Eleanor's Recreation, I don't know. It's a, it's a beautiful spot. Um, okay, so-
Thank you.
Agenda, agenda, agenda. Oh, okay. Uh, request to reduce the performance guaran- uh, guarantee held for the subdivision referred to as Willow Circle by one thousand forty-one, uh, sorry, one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Uh, so the engineer was prepared to make a report to you on this, and since the, uh, continuance of Willow Bend's applications, that he is not here, I have written correspondence from him that the reduction in the surety as requested is absolutely fine, and he confirmed that on Monday with an inspection. However, since Ed is not here and has not provided that in writing, I'm not sure how the board wants to act. But I can confirm that Ed is satisfied with the work performed in consideration of the scope provided in your packet and, um, has accepted the request to reduce the performance guarantee held for the subdivision by one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
So how much, how much do, are we holding?
Um, gosh, I can't recall. If you bear with me a minute, I can report.
Okay. While he's looking at that, Silva Development LLC submitted a letter dated December fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Uh, the total value of the security is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, five, excuse me, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And so this is a, this letter is dated December fifth, twenty twenty-two? And the estimate, estimate cost to complete was from December twenty twenty-two?
Are you referring to quotes provided by the landscaping companies?
I don't know, I'm looking at a letter which has an addendum. Um, I'm just gonna use my phone to calculate this out. I just caught that it was from December twenty twenty-two. But you're saying that some of the quotes are more recent?
Uh, ch-ch-ch-ch. I have a feeling that Mr. Miller recycled the letter from the, and, and did not change the date. This was received very recently. In fact, I can tell you when it was received. Oh, excuse me, Mary. The letter you're referring to was the letter submitted to establish the tripartite agreement. So that was some, the, uh, what's provided in your packet is the total amount of work that is secured by the tripartite. Um, so that's that value plus fifty percent would be the, would be the security of the three fifty-seven and change.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm gonna-
So the total values there should be more or less two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Oh, this is all the backup?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, and they can, they say they've completed enough to take off?
Hundred and forty-eight.
One hundred and forty-one, nine ninety-eight, which Ed, in a text message to me now, has confirmed, he's, has confirmed with an inspection.
Is he texting you now?
Ed is texting me right now.
Do you want him to call, can he call in?
I don't see why not.
Ask him to call in and say that, for the record.
You want him to call that phone?
No, he can call your phone.
Why don't I just call him?
Yeah, you call him. Ed, we're calling you, pick up.
Hey, Ed, could I ask you to affirm on the record, if I put the phone up to the microphone, your recommendation to reduce the performance guarantee held for Willow Circle? If I, if I put you on speaker? All right, give me one second. Ed, you're on speaker. The, the requested amount for reduction was one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And you're, you're, you are live.
Thank you, and I wanna confirm, hello, everybody. Uh, for the record, uh, at Peshaw, Peshaw Engineering, I did do a onsite inspection with Scott Miller this week, walked around the site, confirmed all the numbers he was requesting. It's ac- he's actually being a little conservative. Um, and I think, um, there's actually some more work that's been done, but be that as it may, I wanna confirm that that hundred and forty-one thousand dollar number just mentioned is certainly acceptable, and I would recommend you release that for those funds. One forty-one, nine ninety-eight, I believe, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Evan, that makes it just a li- I think a little easier-
Yeah.
-to record. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion, uh, to approve the request to reduce the performance guarantee held for the subdivision referred to as Willow Circle by one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, great.
Department of Natural Resources requests a planning board letter of sup- and of support of its application to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, for wetlands restoration projects in the Mashpee River and Red Brook. So this is exciting. Um, there's a, there's, uh, parts of the application actually in here. I think the applicant is the Association of Preserve Cape Cod.
That's right, so the applicant, the, um, the Department of Natural Resources is supporting alongside the Conservation Departments, and I believe the Wampanoak Tribe, an application to NOAA, uh, being submitted by Association of Preserve Cape Cod. It is not being submitted by the Department of Natural Resources.
So the application is from APCC or?
The application is from APCC, they'll-
But DNR is?
And Conservation will be supporting that-
Okay.
-application, yes.
Yeah, it's great, it's, um, Hinkley's Pond in Howard, Red Brook, and Mashpee Falmouth, Upper Quashnet River, which is just fantastic, Upper Bass River, Weir Road and Boggs, that's gonna be great, too. And those are freshwater river and bog restorations. Then there's Salt Marsh tidal flow restorations, Weir Creek and Dennis, Oyster Pond and Falmouth, and again, Upper Bass River North, Dennis Road in Yarmouth. And it's for, I saw the total amount, twenty-two million? I think it's twenty-two million. So that'd be good. So there's a draft letter in here. Ooh, I just lost it. Who is signing it? Karen?
That's how I drafted it, yes.
Yep, so I'd, I'd accept a motion to, um, approve and, uh, submit that letter of recommendation signed by the Chair, Karen D. Faulkner.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Good job, that'd be great.
Thank you.
That'd just be fantastic, okay. Old Business Nothing, Board Engineer, did he send anything else?
Um, I did just wanna report that, um, there's been significant movement at Blue Castle Drive with particular reference to the unimproved strip of Blue Castle Drive that, uh, was without the required maintenance for the past few years. Um, Ed has been on-site daily for the past, I'd say, week and a half, inspecting the work that has been, that has been being performed, uh, to his satisfaction. I did have the opportunity also to, uh, ask residents at town meeting, uh, about the quality of the work, and the ones I spoke to are satisfied. Ed will be here, I would imagine, on November first to provide a thorough report and perhaps something in writing, but, um, I am very pleased to report that I, I believe the maintenance obligation has been rectified, um, with hopes of ongoing annual maintenance, but the condition of the road is substantially improved.
Uh, we're glad to, when are we gonna get the sign?
Which sign?
The speed sign.
It's been delivered.
Oh, it has?
Yes, it is in possession by the DPW.
Okay. Are they gonna put it down the ground?
I think when you launch it, we should all go and get it taken with the neighborhood. You wanna do that?
Well, our bicycles ride by and put it at forty miles an hour.
Tell us when it gets launched, 'cause I will be there.
I'll, I will be happy to report back.
I read the other data that there's no sign, maybe he just said, here's a letter that I brought one, but you already got it.
I have it, yep, it was delivered to my office.
Now, is that only for that street, or could the town use that?
So the way you can, conditioned the permit was that, um, you prioritize its use at the intersections of DeGrasse Road, but provide an opportunity for, I guess, the DPW in conjunction with the Police Department to use it at locations that may be advantageous elsewhere. But I think, um, its general intent is along DeGrasse Road.
All right.
You know how, like, people get used to it?
Yeah.
And then, so they move it, and I think that neighborhood was extremely generous in saying, would be fine with one that was, that could be moved around.
Be fine if you move it around, people, oh, my gosh.
Right.
If you leave it where it is, they forget it's there.
Yeah, you know?
Thank God this thing is getting moved to some form of completion at some point.
All right. Let's see. So is, I lost my agenda again, is it, um-
Water quality issues, chairman's report.
Yep, so I will take over as vice chair and note that I was given the Town of Mashpee blue pages by a resident today. Um, Sue Dangle, who is the convener of the Mashpee Wakeby Pond Alliance, did bring this up, said that we should, uh, publish it- said that we should publish it again with some updates. I think this is, this, this book, it was copyrighted, so you had, when we published it, we fine tuned it for Mashpee, remember like Orleans had it, this place had it, that, and we fine tuned it for Mashpee and Mash, the Town of Mashpee paid for it, so.
That's the second one we did, I think.
Is it? It might be.
We did one, when we, yeah.
So why don't, why don't I bring it to the next meeting of the CPC? And see if people would think it was eligible? And see what we would have to do to get that updated and published?
That was good.
It was good, a lot of people read it, and it's, it's like, before graphic novels were really popular, this was a graphic novel. It's really interesting, and everybody loved it, and then they had a contest at the schools.
Yeah.
And it's like, I guess it's throughout.
That's why a lot of people read it, because their kids...
Because their kids stuff with it.
So if we do a new one, maybe you want to put more eye on it from the students, or you get better read out of it.
Isn't your daughter an art teacher over there?
Yep.
Perfect, we got the in.
Ask her, that would be great. And I don't know how active their environmental club is, but you know, that environmental club could at least, you know, earmark the places that need to be updated, if not update them. Do you know what I mean? They could help with that, but anyways, I'll bring that to CPC and see. Too late, okay. I've had like the weirdest day at work, it's just, it's just really kind of set me off. So anyways, all right, da-da-da-da. So water quality issues, town planner reports harbor management planning committee update.
I was not present at our last meeting, I just, I do know that the planning project leads Ashley and her consultants helping the town with the process, did meet with Rosemary Burns Love to discuss what may be required to reestablish public access to water and ancient ways to water. That again will be a long going process. Dale, were you at the last meeting?
Yes, I was. I can provide an update that I'm working with Kristen, which is the partner there, to, we're gonna try to set like a information gathering event with the tribes to get their input similar to the workshop they had, you know, last year at the library, so. We're gonna get the tribal community involved as well. Hopefully sometime within the next four weeks, four to six weeks.
Thanks, Dale. So that's the update on, on the harbor management planning committee. If it's okay, I'd like to move the housing production plan. We are hosting our second workshop focused on goals and strategies on October 26th, at 6:30 at the Mashpee Public Library again. Please attend. We did get flyers home in backpacks like we normally do, we have an outstanding social media post hopefully being pumped out by the schools this week. We've extended the survey through October 30th because of some lackluster participation early. We got flyers out at town meeting, we've been sending out additional email correspondence, and we've been receiving more paper copies, so I'm hopeful we can at least double what we were having a couple of weeks ago. But I haven't had firm numbers from Alexis since we last reported to the Affordable Housing Committee a week or two ago. So between now and the end of December, our consultants will be finalizing the draft needs assessment, we'll be segueing into the workshop relative to goals and strategies. And at the last I presented to the Affordable Housing Committee, we brought them a call to action to review the goals and objectives of the 25, 2015 housing production plan. I'd like to ask the planning board to do the same, if you are able to, to do so, and provide me any comments you may have relative to the goals and objectives from 2015. The goal being to understand what strategies still make sense and you'd like to carry through, anything you'd like to modify, or anything you'd like to strike, or anything you'd like to add. So I'm not sure if in your packets I have provided the document from Barrett Planning Group, so if Mary's nodding yes, in your packet is a, a bulleted list more or less of the goals and objectives from 2015. If you wouldn't mind taking that home and reviewing it, and send me an email, or set up a meeting with me to, to discuss it, I'd like to pass along the planning board's comments to our consultants, considering you are one of the two entities who are going to be adopting the HPP when it's, when it's completed. So again, October 26th at the public library at 6:30 PM for our next workshop, we hope you can all attend. And again, October 30th for the survey.
Do you want that before 26th?
At your convenience, but sooner the better, as always, we're, we're on a time crunch for the HPP, I mean, I'd say we've made a lot of progress, and I'm eager to get through the next workshop, because in early, in early November, or mid-November, we're gonna, we're gonna hopefully have the draft plan assembled for your review. So the sooner we receive your comments, the better.
All right, so this is what, what we talked about before for housing, based on our LCP work. So I think that should definitely go in as our comments. Because that's what we had, remember? Ashley from?
Ashley Sweet from Weston Sampson.
Weston and Sampson, she was gonna compile, I mean, I have pages and pages of goals, policies, and actions, and she was gonna compile them, has she done any of that work?
I am waiting for it to be provided, but yes, we went through, that last meeting we had on the LCP at the senior center, we went through and codified and organized everything. It's my intent to bring you back the plan in draft form to begin review, inclusive of all your goals and strategies.
That's, this is from that meeting?
Yes, it is. And I should note that the draft housing chapters, the existing conditions, and these have been provided to Barrett.
And Ashley Sweet was gonna make sure that we had, you know, the goals under goals, policies under policies, and actions, like you read them and you're like, is that a goal or a policy, and that, and she was gonna, she was gonna sort it out, so this is, Alex, is that the consultant, Alexis?
Alexis.
Alexis, should be, just let her know that we didn't quite sort that out, Ashley Sweet was gonna do that for us.
Yep.
And then, there's a lot of good information on the LCP survey on housing.
Yes, there is.
Did you give that to her yet?
Yes, I did.
Okay, because that, that, I don't know, must have been like seven or eight questions could help with the HPP chapter.
100%.
You know, I've been saying about the base, put houses up there.
Yes!
Maura Healy just said five, I asked for 400 acres, and I did this when Matt Patrick was running.
Yeah?
I helped him on his campaign, I said, why don't we do something with the base? He told me, oh, you can't do that. I wrote letters to the governor and everything about, about the base, but that's a good start.
It's great.
500 acres, what, but.
I think it's up to 600 now.
Been talked about for so many years.
They kept on telling me, you can't put on the base, you can't put on the base.
Well, they couldn't figure out who's in charge.
Took it until there was a woman in charge, right Lynn?
Yeah.
But it's always been a good idea, and
So, I mean, that could be into this.
People really have been, look at Chrissy's face.
I'm not gonna go there, put that bold print in the minutes.
Michael's like, I'm not gonna approve those minutes. But, no, it's, it's, and I, when, when that came up, I was like, first person, I go, oh, Dennis always said that, so, yeah, no, it's good. It's good, I, I don't think it's gonna, there's not gonna be a road that leads to Mashpee though, that's the only thing, right? I don't even know where the 600 acres is.
I, so I mean, I've been fielding some questions relative to 600 acres, because there's a lot of people in Mashpee. Right now, for me, it's those folks who are living around 209 Old Barnstable Road, who are like, oh, we don't need to do this, the base has spoken. But there's a lot of, there's a certain lack of definition around the 600 acres.
Yeah.
And I don't think, I'm super happy, and it's exciting that the base has made the statement.
Right.
But let's keep focused on our other priorities in the time being, until there's more clarity around what the intentions are, and how the housing will be provided, and who gets it, and all of that.
Because most of the, most of the land is the airport, right? We kind of, we kind of boarded the airport.
Yeah.
So I don't think, they won't put the housing near the airport, because of the crash then.
I'm afraid of using something like that for homes, so military.
The governor today also announced a very significant housing bond bill.
Oh, okay, Chapman's having a meeting tomorrow on it.
Yeah, big money available.
Huge.
Yeah.
Huge money.
A lot of money, yeah.
Huge money, and, and, and as you see, when money starts pouring in, the, the housing units get built. It's, you know, you need that.
On, on that 600 acre allocation, it might be bordering towns
Right.
get a proportionate share.
Yeah.
That was my idea, 100 acres each town. There's four towns, let's border it, listen, you give 400 acres.
It would be nice, it would be nice if, if the road, one of the roads led into Mashpee, because then it would help our local businesses and stuff like that.
But what I'm scared of, it's gonna be statewide though. It's not gonna be just for the Cape Cod residents, because it's on, you know, it's a state project, so.
It won't have that local preference, but everybody here will be able to apply.
You get people from all over the state, maybe moving in, you know, and not much of the Cape getting help.
Gotta relieve pressure on the existing units, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true.
Usually about, usually about 75% of the applicants are from the town it's located in, or one town over.
Yeah.
Because most, most people, they don't want to move too far, believe it or not, but there'll be a solid 25% that are from statewide.
Yeah.
But you're right, when you do it locally, you can have local preference on 75%.
Yeah, each town gets so many people.
Yeah. I also, I was on a meeting yesterday, and it was people that are doing stuff regarding the Barnstable Municipal Airport. And there's a local grassroots call to close that airport and use the one on the base instead. So I know, I thought that was kind of interesting, especially since it would probably be my road that they're going in and out of, I was like, oh, wait a minute.
Oh no, yeah, it'd be blown out.
Right, won't they, they'll go up and down, it will be a Schumet Road, that will be the entrance and exit.
All right, let's move on.
Oh, well, okay. Anything else on the HPP?
No.
Oh, and I know you're up against a really tight deadline with that DTLA money or something like that. What they let me do last time was bill for whatever I had completed. Do you know what I mean? Like I built, whatever the consultant billed me for up through December 31st.
And, you know, there is a process for extension, we just want to try and maintain consistency with the terms of the agreement as much as possible.
And you have two sources of money?
Correct.
Right, so, okay. Board member committee reports Cape Cod Commission, they had a third stake meeting regarding housing stakeholders for their regional housing strategy. I wasn't able to go, Evan, were you able to?
It was the day I left for vacation.
I know, the town, you know, I work for the Town of Yarmouth, the town administrator went and really promoted the use of redevelopment and village center models, so that was good. And the Cape Cod Commission has been identifying parcels Capewide for possible use for housing. Were you ever able to comment on the ones in Mashpee?
No, I actually heard from Aaron Perry today, reminding me of my obligation to comment. It incl, it's pretty good, it includes some, but not all of what I think you've discussed as priority parcels. But Aaron did follow up with me today also with asking about a, a follow-up discussion, because most of Mashpee's representatives weren't able to be there on the 27th.
It was like this terrible, like, everybody had a doctor's appointment, or was on vacation, or something.
So, um...
It was just like, they picked this date that, yeah, well, why don't we, why don't, why don't we reschedule, like have a repeat, and maybe have it at the tribal center?
Yeah, they, they forwarded me, I haven't reviewed it, I came in after work today, but...
Let's try to do it at the tribal center.
Sure.
That way, because it was a lot of tribal members that came to stakeholder meeting number two. I think there was like six, it was great, so. Oh. And I just got a text from our select board person, Michaela Columbo, and she reports that she went to the Cape Cod Commission housing meeting. And Michaela, if you want to text me a report, I will, I will read it out loud. As, oh, charter review committee, oh, it's on here, okay. Is it Monday? And is that October 23rd? Okay, so the charter review committee meets?
On 30th.
Okay, October 23rd and October 30th at 6:30. And we've incorporated all of our comments into a document, we haven't gotten to the public comments yet, but we will slowly get to everything, and then decide as a group kind of prioritize the changes. There, there, there are gonna be some small changes, maybe some bigger changes. I think we're having, and I don't know if it's the 23rd or the 30th, but we're gonna have the town clerk of Mashpee come and talk to us, and, who is elected, and we're also gonna have a town clerk come who's appointed, and they're gonna talk to us about the pros and cons of both.
I like them elected.
Yeah, I know, I like them appointed, see, it's just, it's right down the middle, it's like, so anyways. Community Preservation Committee had no meeting this month because the board selectmen had to meet that night, so that got postponed. Applications for the community preservation are due November 1st. Applications are available at the town manager's office. If you're interested in applying, the funds can be used for creation and preservation of affordable housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation. So you're putting in something with Drew?
Yes.
Anything else coming in?
I am aware, not from my office, but I do want to report to the board that I was asked by a member of the Environmental Oversight Committee about the planning department's interest in facilitating or helping to facilitate an update to the open space and rec plan. So it was, I was asked if I was comfortable having the EOC be the planning committee to support an update to the open space and rec plan, which I certainly have no issue with. So I believe the EOC's intent is to submit an application to the CPC to fund the open space and rec plan update. I'm not participating in the development of the application, but will certainly support the development of, an update of the plan if approved by the voters.
Excellent, design review. Plan review.
Plan review did not, has not met since my last report.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
We met at the end of September, Evan pretty much provided the update, we're gonna, we're going over updating the mission statement, vision goals, we had Alexandra Zolo come in.
Yes.
Spoke on her experience with the 300 land committee in Falmouth, and maybe, and, yeah, she just went over that, and then we're going from there. Meeting next, end of this month.
So exciting, that's great. I do have an update from a select person, Michaela Wyman-Columbo, who went to the Cape Cod Commission's third stakeholder meeting regarding the regional housing. She says, there's, there was a lot of conversation about moving housing forward, the importance of density in areas that are sewered. Talk about getting out the Cape Cod housing design to town planners, I'm sorry, that's housing design form-based, must be form-based code, to town planners. Thank you, Michaela. And Historic District Commissioner.
No meeting.
Any, oh, public comment.
Good evening, one and all, Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. I have two... I have two comments that I want to say. One is about Red Brook. This is very exciting. Where I live, our homeowners association is the Mashpee side, and it's been very disconcerting that we, as a homeowners association, own half of a Cranberry Bog, the other half is in Falmouth. So it's been very complicated to try to do something because, and, and I had heard that there was an intention to go to the state, to feds, to other places to be able to get the funding to do what has to be done. So this is very exciting, because any of you who drive down Red Brook Road, you know that when it rains, like it did this afternoon, you are in a big puddle down there. But my main question was, and there's been a lot of conversation about this on social media, why are there three stop signs on Job's Fishing Road now? And is that the town that did that, or is that private? And it's confusing to people, and a lot of people aren't quite stopping because they don't expect a stop sign to be there. Can somebody answer that question?
It was not the town who installed the signs. It was Mashpee Commons.
Okay.
I have an outstanding question to representatives from Mashpee Commons. It's my understanding is that Job's Fishing is privately owned. However, it's unclear whether or not the realignment of Job's Fishing or any subdivision approval contemplated stop signs, so it was not the town. We are awaiting some answers.
Okay.
And so the town was as surprised as residents were when the stop signs appeared.
But they should do a better job of marketing the roads.
I understand there are no stop lines and things like that, so...
Coming down, they should tell you.
I don't have a heck of a lot of information at this time, however.
Their stop signs are stupid.
And they're 10 feet high, those signs.
Yeah. They're like, oh, I was supposed to stop there.
Right, people are screeching through a hole because they was like, whoop, there's a stop sign where there never was before. And I can see totally the one that, if you're coming out of this central part of Mashpee Commons, that, that perpendicular to Job's Fishing, but then on both sides of Job's Fishing, people are scooting right along until they see the sign. Anyway, that's what I figured, that it was something, maybe this means that they're going to start doing some building in Mashpee Commons.
Yep, so we, so, so, I don't know, was it 2017 we had all those workshops, right? They had a traffic specialist, I think you had just started, and he said, oh, yeah, people are going too fast on that. So that's, that's one thing. But it's also promoted by Mashpee Commons as a way to avoid the rotary.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? To kind of spread the traffic out. So it's, yeah.
There's a lot of traffic, and it's, it's a tough road because of the lines, it really is.
And people do go fast on there. But I didn't think that was the traffic calming solution was three stop signs.
I am looking for answers, and I don't have them just yet, but they'll be forthcoming.
Well, when you do, please let us in the public know, drive down that road all the time.
I'd be more than happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other matter for the board to consider?
Meteors, mercury, adjourned.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.